Good evening. This is the Covington Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, December 2nd, 2021. It is 6:32 PM and we are underway. Let's see, we will start with the roll call. Let's see, we don't have Vice Chair Ingram, which we expected. Let's see, Commissioner Gilbert Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Columber?
Here.
Commissioner Fosch Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Thorne?
Here.
And Commissioner Graff?
Here.
With that, we have everybody except Vice Chair Ingram. So we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Ryan, if you could raise the flag, please, and if everyone could mute. Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ryan. Let's see, first is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody want to make any changes to the agenda? Or would anyone wish to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye, raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody need to make any changes to the consent agenda? No? Already, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Back it in.
Alrighty, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye and raise your hands, please.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No, okay. Let's see, that will move us on to our, well, let's see, let me check here really quick. Yes, okay, so we're going to move on to our citizen comments. The citizen comment period is to provide opportunity for the members of the audience to address the commission on items either not on the agenda or not listed as a public hearing. I'll open this portion of the meeting and ask for a show of hands for those persons wishing to address the commission. When recognized, please give your name and city of residence and state the matter of your interest. If your interest is an agenda item, I would like to suggest that your comments wait until that item comes up. Citizen comments are directed to the Planning Commission, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate. Citizen comments will be limited to four minutes. If you require more time than the allotted time, your item can be placed on the next agenda. If you are dialing in for this meeting and you wish to speak, please press star nine to raise your hand. With that, do we have any citizens wishing to speak on items other than tonight's public forum topic?
Mr. Chairman, it looks like we have one attendee, he's an old friend of the Planning Commission, and he has not raised his hand yet.
Okay. I'll give him a few seconds to do so if he decides. And with that, I will close the first citizen comment section for this evening's meeting. We'll move on now to the public hearing and recommendation. For the first part of this, I will hand it off to Ryan here.
Thank you, Chair Williams. Let me go ahead and set up here for the PowerPoint presentation. Bear with me. Alright, can everybody see this?
Yep.
This evening, the Planning Commission will have a presentation from staff and from Lake Point Covington, Inc., the master developer of the Lake Point Urban Village. Here's some information where you can locate the information that you have in your packet. Also, any pertinent information that you would need on all the processes that the Planning Commissions and City Council staff have gone through for the Lake Point project. If you have any questions, my email address is provided right there. Just to remember, everybody, that this meeting is being recorded and once again, all materials are posted on the project website. We're talking about the Planning Commission's role right now. As you notice, the review box, which is normally checked, is not checked because tonight, we're having a public hearing and potentially a recommendation to City Council. As required by legislative actions, the Planning Commission is required to hold a public hearing and provide a recommendation to the City Council. At the end of the public hearing, the Planning Commission deliberates on the proposed amendments, staff recommendation, public comments, provided in writing or during the public hearing, and based on the record, the Planning Commission then makes their recommendation on the proposed amendments. So as again, this is a legislative action consistent with CMC 14.30.060. On November 17th of this year, a notice of this Planning Commission public hearing was published in the Seattle Times, posted on the city website and posted at City Hall. It was also posted on six notice boards at the entrance to the Lake Point subarea and at the existing roadways and dead ends at the boundary of the subarea. It was also mailed and emailed to all property owners, or excuse me, it was mailed to all property owners with 500 feet and anybody who signed up for more information on, from past meetings. So how this will work tonight is the Planning Commission Chair, excuse me, the Planning Commission Chair opens a public hearing, which he's already done. City staff will provide a presentation and the commissioners may ask questions or for clarification purposes. Then it's the applicant's turn to provide a presentation and the commissioners may ask questions. Once that's done, then the Planning Commission Chair will announce the opportunity for a public to testify on the record to provide additional information and perspectives. Public comments are directed to the Planning Commission. All speakers should provide their name and whether they are residents or business landowners in the city for the record. When no more members of the public are wishing to comment, the Planning Commission Chair will close the public hearing. No further public comments are taken. The Planning Commission will then deliberate on the proposed amendments, staff recommendation, public comments provided in writing during the public hearing and based on the information in the record, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation on the proposed amendments to the City Council. So here's a little bit of history of where we are now. We started this back in 2012. And why are we here today? Well, in 2018, Lake Point Covington, also known as Oak Point, the master developer for the Lake Point Urban Village submitted a comprehensive docket application known as LA 18-0002, which, you know, we could refer to as the docket application, which was authorized for evaluation in May 2018 by the City Council. So in that process, you went through amendments to the comprehensive plan. You went through amendments to the planned action ordinance. There was a programmatic environmental impact statement provided in there. And now what this is, is basically memorializing everything together to the development agreement. So nothing that you've heard this evening or will hear this evening or you've heard last meeting should be a shock or a surprise to you because you've reviewed everything before. You previously reviewed the amendments, the comp plan, which are directly related, as posed and were adopted by the council. You previously reviewed the amendments to the planned action ordinance, which directly relate to this proposal, and were also adopted by the council. And now what this is, is coming together for an alignment in the development agreement to make everything consistent. So here is kind of the development agreement process. It really starts here with provisions under RCW 70B 171. It also moves into CMC 18114.040. It talks about processing procedure for development agreements. Outlining this as a legislative action, the Planning Commission is responsible for holding a public hearing related to the development agreement, making the recommendation. And the council will hold a subsequent hearing and decide on whether or not to approve the development agreement amendments on behalf of the city. So this is kind of a fun little trail kind of example of where we were at the beginning and where we are now. It's been quite a process. Like I said, this whole thing started in 2018. It originally started in 2012. But this specific project, when we updated the PAO, the Comprehensive Plan, the SEIS, and now finally, the amendments to the development agreement, we've come a long way. This commission has heard several presentations, made several recommendations, all in favor of everything that is supporting the proposed amendments within the development agreement. So here's the general timeline. City, the master developer, like I said, have been working on these amendments since 2018 through a series of meetings and negotiations. The Planning Commission's role in this process is to hold the public hearing and make a recommendation of the City Council. The City Council meeting that we're proposing to bring this to for a public hearing is January 25th, 2022. And I remind the Planning Commission that at the last meeting, I notified you that we are probably going to be canceling the second meeting in December and that all depends on what happens this evening. So if you come to a recommendation for City Council, then we won't have to have a second meeting in December. So something to think about. So as provided in your packet, here is a list of the requested amendments. They're certainly in more detail within your packet. There are amendments regarding public benefits, a lot of development, the Army Corps of Engineers jurisdictional determination, construction and timing. Excuse me. Of the trail construction, transportation currency and certain general items, and of course, amendments to the exhibits. Here is Exhibit 2 from your packet, also known as Exhibit J from the existing development agreement. You'll notice that there are little numbered annotations throughout the few maps that you're going to see. Those have been provided to you as attachment free and those explain what the changes are to the exhibits from the current exhibits that are adopted by council. Here is the proposed changes to the master circulation plan. Again, there are several annotations on here, number, that you can refer to back in Exhibit 3, or excuse me, Attachment 3 to your packet, and that should help guide you through the explanation of these maps. This is the phasing plan. As you see, Phase 1A is over on the right-hand side of the screen. That is Maple Hills 5, the proposed subdivision that is currently under review at the city. Phase 1B is located on the left side and I'm sure that the master developer can explain certain things about the phasing later on in their presentation. Here is a picture of the proposed master trails plan. As you see, there is a trail going across the bottom. I believe that is the Covington Highlands Trail in blue. There is a wildlife pedestrian crossing that will be underneath the Covington Connector or the proposed Lake Point Boulevard, which the master developer currently has an application in to develop that as a pedestrian-friendly tunnel and wildlife crossing. There's also a proposed trail adjacent to Highway 18 and around the Central Pond. So the next steps will be applicant provide a presentation. We will take public testimony and then the Planning Commission, public hearing deliberation and recommendation. And as mentioned before, the City Council will hold a public hearing deliberation, possibly take action on January 25th. So here's a list of the recommendations also provided in the memo that was provided to you in your packet. As mentioned, this is a legislative action consistent with 1430.060. We follow all necessary procedures and requirements of a legislative action. And we recommend that the Planning Commission approve or recommend the City Council to approve the proposed 2021 major amendment to the Lake Point Development Agreement in substantial form. It's found in the Planning Commission staff memo, finding the amendments are in accordance with Covington Comprehensive Plan and CMC 14.30.060. If you want more information, here's the website to go to. It's covingtonwa.gov/lakepoint. Provide you more information. And here's some information for the applicant. We have tonight with us a couple of members of the master developer team. We have Robert Schwinn and Megan Nelson with Oak Point. So yeah, I will end my presentation and if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know.
Better unmute myself. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff regarding the presentation? Okay, it looks like we don't. So we'll move on to the presentation from the Lake Point developers.
Hi, I'm Robert Schwinn, developing manager for Oak Point Communities, the owner's rep for Lake Point Covington, Inc. And my main focus here tonight is make sure you don't have a second meeting this morning. Like Ryan did a great job on the presentation. There's not much for me to add to on here. But you know, this is, like you said, a very familiar step in the process you guys have been gone through before. All the items on the amendments have been addressed in previous documents. Even though we're increasing the density, the overall traffic impacts remain the same. And then we also added the police funding as a public benefit. You know, this is the final step for us to be able to really start making this a community. We have obviously started the Covington Connector, 204 segments. Let's say probably 80% done. We have kicked off the construction on SR 18, the two roundabouts. We anticipate the construction of Lake Point Boulevard starting sometime in 2022. In order for us to further develop our site plans and get partners engaged, you know, the Melbourne improvement needs to be finished, that kind of is the groundwork and the playbook for all of us to move forward. With that, I'll open up any questions that any of you may have as well.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Schwinn? Okay, it looks like we don't have any questions for you. Thank you for the presentation. Let's see, with that, we will go ahead and open up the public comment period. Ryan, do we have any members of the public who are wish to speak or ask questions this evening?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. I will provide them a opportunity to do that now.
Mr. Cottle, please proceed.
Yes, my name is David Cottle. I'm a resident of Covington at 27010206 Avenue Southeast. I am quite familiar with all of the plans and agreements that have been put forth for the Lake Point development. I wanted to say some words. I do have some minor issues and concerns I want to bring up. First off, I want to say that I know that Oak Point Communities is one of the Pacific Northwest premier home building and land and commercial development companies. They've been founded in 2001 and they've been very instrumental in building places in Pierce, King and Snohomish Counties. I like their vision. Creating a desirable timeless community requires more than simply lining a street with a few new homes. That's their quote. The best neighborhoods reflect their residents, become a source of comfort, identity and inspiration. They feel proper planning, understanding and vision creates a sense of home from day one. I also strongly endorse the city of Covington's comprehensive plan. The land use goal number five, which says the Lake Point Urban Village is thriving and accessible by multi-modal transportation at the northern gateway to the city, providing regional shopping and employment, new housing opportunities for the community and a mix of recreational amenities. So I think that based on that, I think there's a positive effective match for the city in my estimation. Let me express my five concerns. Number one is concern about the timing for police officers needed for this area. Is it going to be when commercial development is done or residential development is completed? Or when is it really needed? And I'm referring to the information that is in the agreement on page 11 of 89, which amendments regarding public benefits. Where it talks about the fact that there would be four new entry level police officers 100% being covered by the master developer for recruiting, hiring and training costs when we hit different milestones of commercial development of 675,000 square feet, 925,000 square feet, 1,075,000 square feet and 1,320,000 square feet. And there's formulas on how to go about doing that. I understand that we're waiting for those commercial areas to be developed. But I'm kind of concerned about the fact we also have residential that will be going on. Maybe not at that exact phase, but soon after. And I want to make sure that we have the police available to accommodate the security and other safety concerns. Also, on the extension amendments regarding general terms, which is on page 15 of 89, it says that we're going to go with the 15-year agreement, development agreement. And with that 15-year term, will be extended up to an additional five years once the developer can show that they've reached 425,000 square feet of at least 50% of the maximum gross commercial floor area constructed on the Lake Point Urban Village. Well, that 425,000 means it's 850,000 square feet of commercial. And I know that's been modified to reflect 1,325. So I believe it needs to be adjusted to show 662,500. Now, my concern is then, if they haven't hit any of those values to get the police onboard at 675,000, because 662,000 still isn't even enough to even cover the first iteration of the police. It will be waiting a long time if they're not being able to get the development going for commercial retail and office space. So that's my first concern. So between those two elements, I'm a little concerned about the wrong numbers and maybe not being able to police for a period of time. Okay, my concern number two is the following. And that is on page 12 of 89 regarding the fact that we determine that if we have a hotel or a senior citizen assisted housing use and the square footage associated with that will be deducted from the commercial square footage development threshold. The answer I've got, and the question I've got is why? Why is it kept separate? If they're going to have that type of square footage and it's going to affect traffic, policing, everything else we do, then why is it deducted from the commercial square footage development? Concern number three, fire stations. I assume the fire station 78 at southeast 256, which is on the other side of Highway 18, which appears to be the closest fire station, is going to be the only one that's going to be providing that type of fire prevention or fire, you know, management. Is that sufficient? Or should there be a consideration for an additional fire station within Lake Point Development for housing and commercial office space? The reason why I'm bringing that up is I know that at Oak Point with Black Diamond, they've got a fire station being developed, being able to accommodate their development, which is 4,800 houses and 1.2 million square feet for commercial. So that's why I'm bringing that up. My fourth concern is pedestrian wildlife cross, undercrossing. I think it's great. I really want to make sure that that is completed and verified for nature to take place as well as for us to go through and use it as a pedestrian undercrossing. My last concern is maybe, maybe I shouldn't even worry about this, but I don't want to have a blow up between the developers and the city as took place at Black Diamond over the last few years with Oak Point. That seems to be resolved now with 500 homes sold as of June 2021. Note, they're still going to have more houses, it'll be up to 4,800 and more than 1.2 million square feet of commercial office and retail space. Thank you for your consideration regarding my concerns and questions. Please keep up the good work on the Planning Commission. It is very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle. Is there anyone else wishing to speak, Ryan?
If I can unmute myself, that would work. I see nobody else raising their hand. Now would be the time, if anybody's interested in speaking to the Planning Commission, testifying, you would need to raise your hand to be provided the opportunity to speak.
Give it a little bit of time here and see. Okay, it sounds like not. So with that, I will close the public comment period and we can commence question and answer with the commission. Do any of the commissioners have any questions that they would like to bring up? None?
I have some, sorry. I was reviewing my notes. Mr. Cottle brought up and I was trying to figure out how to formulate it all because he was so quick. I can't remember, and I know it's in our notes, but the the gal that did the presentation last time did address the number of police officers because I remember a commissioner brought that up as a concern and she addressed that. I'm wondering if, is it Mr. Schwinn? If he could remind us of the formula and stuff.
I don't have the formula off the top of my head. It's in the document. Ryan wants to pull that up. But basically, where that sat is we spent many, many meetings with all stakeholders negotiating this development agreement amendment, including Chief McCarthy was at many of these. And he, working together with him, is how we came up with this four additional officers. And he said where he really needs the help is the pre-funding of their training. And that's how we came up with this. You know, right now, I wasn't, I've been involved with this for nearly three years. I didn't do the original development agreement. But right now, we're allowed to build 850,000 square feet. And there is no onus on us for the police services. So working with Chief McCarthy, he said, you know, adding this additional incremental increase to commercial square footage, that's where our service calls are and that's where I need the help. And that's where we offered up this formula to add these four officers as a public benefit. Thank you, Ryan.
What you're seeing in front of you is the the formula that was put together for the officer training, onboarding costs at certain levels throughout the development as agreed upon through negotiations with the master developer in the city of Covington.
And like I mentioned, you know, right now, the current development agreement has our threshold that 850. We elected to start this earlier, 675. Knowing that we had an obligation past seven, past 850. This also, you know, covers the concern is, you know, there's existing retail, there's construction, there is need for police services. We acknowledge that. This is how we're mitigating and benefiting the public on that issue.
Does that address your question, Commissioner Gilbert Smith?
Yes, and I think my other one. my other one, and hopefully other commissioners were have other questions, but my other one was about the fire station too. As you all know, I've been around a long time, I've heard a lot of, unfortunately, my memory is not the best. But I remember at some point addressing the fire needs. And so, um, can someone speak to that and remind me how, how those are being addressed?
Ryan, you're looking at me? Here, here again, I was, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. I wasn't involved with the initial development agreement. But I do know one of our mitigation measures is the extension of one ninety-first street. The one ninety-first street's primary ser- primary's purpose is to provide a quicker response for the power. I don't have any more recollection of that, but I know that that was a mitigation major for the fires extending one ninety-first and that wasn't required.
And Ryan, could you maybe pull up a map showing that so we can visually see that? I'm trying to go through my packet, but there's so many pages. Just if we could see it on the screen.
They can show up Ryan and they get master site plan, figure that out.
You know, this is one of the lightest packets we've ever had and, you know.
Eighty-nine pages and I'm flipping through here.
There you go. So as you, as you follow my arrow down here, here is a hundred and ninety-first.
And so it was determined that by doing that, that that would be providing adequate coverage.
Well, I believe what the master developer was referring to is that it provides access for emergency vehicles to quicker respond to the area. But I think that Selena has her hand raised and she may be able to provide additional information on that.
Okay.
I'll just add that the, the regional fire authority puts out a capital improvement plan every year. And just at the last council meeting, we adopted their current capital facilities plan as well as an impact fee that developers pay for their proportionate share that goes into the fire district's capital program. In that document, they talk about the impacts of future growth. So they forecast all the way out to, what is it, twenty twenty-six at this, I think it was twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty, no, beyond. Yeah, um, twenty twenty-six. And so they, they've included, well, one, they've been at the table with us for the majority of this journey. The next piece of that is that they look at those future growth calculations that we give them and provide to them, the DA being part of that discussion. And then they do their analysis based on what they anticipate coming forward. So what they've said to date is that there, so they have this area called impacts of future growth. And they talk about their methodology and you can go through and read all of that. Um, they do talk about the growth that they anticipate to see within that, that timeframe. Um, and then they estimate all the way out to twenty thirty-five as a result in that. And then they've got all these calculations, but their summary of, of that basically says the pattern of growth and estimates of future impacts and service demand remain consistent with their master plan. Um, and as a result of that evaluation, the projected new dwelling units and commercial square footages estimated, all of this remains the same. So what that basically says to us is that they are tracking us. We are falling within their estimations of what they anticipate for service demand. And that at this point, it hasn't triggered necessarily a new station. They have other capital things that that get triggered that they spend that money on. Maybe it's a new, a new, um, fire rig or, you know, other capital than just a physical station. And then this is also very close to their station that they have on two fifty-sixth as well. So I'm also kind of jumping back in as far as kind of the past picture. I know they've been on this journey, but just looking at the snapshot of their capital program, which they just released and the city approved two weeks ago, they seem to be lining up and being prepared for growth. They're, they're, they're including that in their estimations.
Okay, thank you, Selena. That's very helpful. Okay, so that answers my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, do any of the other commissioners have any questions or points that they would like to discuss? Okay, it looks like not.
Okay, well, if no one else is going to ask.
Oh, well, go for it.
It's so strange that Commissioner Ingram isn't here, because I know he's a numbers guy and he would probably have caught the numbers thing too. So could we address what Mr. Cottle brought up with the numbers? I'm a little confused. He was talking about, uh, what page was that on?
It was on, I believe, eleven of eighty-nine.
Uh, no, I think that one might have been fifteen or eighteen.
Do you like me to take that one, Robert?
Oh, it is on fifteen, I'm sorry.
Please, Megan.
Sure, I think he was talking about the extension of the DA section in, um, flipping through, thirty-five point three, so page fifteen. And I think the concern that was raised is that it shows four hundred and twenty-five thousand uh, square feet as the threshold for when an extension of the DA could happen. And previously it had just had a fifty percent threshold. And so why we didn't keep that fifty percent threshold? And the reason being is because we didn't, in doing this DA amendment, we didn't extend the term any further. So we're actually, we have a reduced amount of time now. If you look at, say, this being day one to achieve a larger amount of square footage. So what we did is pegged the extension amount of square footage at what we had before, which was the four twenty-five. So fifty percent of the eight fifty previously was four twenty-five. So what we said was, hey, we just have to reach that original number in order to be able to ask for that extension, which would get us the additional time to be able to build this additional amount of square feet and the additional residential units. Did that make any sense? Did that make any sense?
Yes, that was totally makes sense now. Just helpful to have that explanation.
Okay.
And then I guess, um, since someone else has questions, I'll just address Mr. Cottles. Can we receive an explanation for the bit about the hotel and why that would be deducted from the commercial square feet? And I don't remember what page or anything that was on. I did see it at one point.
That was twelve of eighty-nine, I think, I, I believe that that's, uh, section three point one. But for some reason is numbered nine point one point two.
Oh, yes. Twelve.
Yeah.
So if someone could explain the reason for that, that might be helpful.
Yeah, Megan, you want to take that one for me?
But the, I mean, the reason that I would state is that in, in our view typically, um, both hotel square footage as well as uh, senior housing is counted as a kind of a commercial, um, application or use. So that's why, um, we asked that the city explicitly acknowledge that for purposes of tracking whether or not senior housing or hotel use would be applied as a deduct from the residential side versus a deduct from the commercial side. So that, that's, that's why that language is in here. Um, was just to clarify how that would be counted for purposes of our, our residential tracking and our commercial tracking.
Okay, to, to clarify on that, you're saying that a hotel counts as commercial, but as a, a senior facility, apartments or otherwise would count as residential?
No, both of them in this case would count as commercial.
Really?
And that has what we do with the traffic and of how that's tied together. I mean, I have a single family home, you have people getting up for school, to work and whatnot. We have a senior living facility, they don't have your work schedule, they don't have your school schedule. And that's how come those, those are, we fact those separate.
Okay, yeah, and that makes sense. Thank you for that explanation.
Do you have any more questions, Commissioner Gilbert?
No, no, that's everything.
Okay, yeah, no, that's great. Do any other commissioners have any questions?
Just a, a little technicality on your, on your, the way you count car trips from a, say, a single family residence, um, neighborhood. Um, as you were saying, seniors and senior housing don't go to work. But for example, I'm retired and live in a single family home. Um, so how do you have an adjustment that you make to account for people who live in a single family residence, but also don't work?
There are not adjustments made for that. So there's, you've probably heard referenced either in the discussion of the DA or in other projects, there's what's called a trip generation manual and they collect data from all over the, the country, I think. Um, and look at what a typical single family home generates from a trip basis, right? So they take averages. Um, and so, um, they don't typically, I mean, there's a discount applied because it is a law of averages, but typically it's, you know, the one P, PM peak hour trip per single family home is what kind of the standard is. So, um, for purposes of our calculation, senior, you know, senior living projects do have a, I don't know what it is, and Ryan, you may be able to fill that in or Selena, but it's a much lower than a one PM peak hour per unit um, traffic generation based on the trip generation manual and the data they've collected year after year after year.
So is the important part in collecting that information more of the AM PM trips rather than the midday trips?
The, the standard, I guess, unit of study or in where, where most jurisdictions look at impacts is the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour, because that's where the most, the most impact and the most delay that you see is during those, those, that was the two hour windows.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do any other commissioners have any questions? Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Growth?
Yeah, to answer, I guess, in the form of a question based on, that's what you asked, I'll pose this by saying since the senior living facility typically has like a point three, uh, PM peak hour trip generation. And we recently saw from the state, the allowance for senior living facilities to be counted as hotels. And we recently modified the code to kind of put those together. Are we seeing this development agreement being modified to add senior housing because hotel is already in it?
I didn't know we're excluding senior house.
So you're adding it to the commercial side as opposed to the residential? Because I would assume we recently had a legislative action saying that senior, this type of use shall go anywhere that a hotel is allowed. So there's some nexus to these being tied together. Is that the reason why we're having that exclusion?
No, we actually started this drafting way before the, the actual legislation that you're referring to right now. Um, I think if senior housing was kind of always contemplated, e- even in the first development agreement, this is more of a clarification now for purposes of, of tracking how these units are applied going forward. And it, and it, and to your point, it tracks with what we, we were just, you know, so far ahead of the curve. Right, Ryan and Selena? Um, this tracks what the kind of state legislation is doing as well.
Does that answer your question? Uh, Commissioner Growth? Yep, okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Culliver?
A question about the, uh, trip generation per household kind of a formula. I see a lot of households where there are three or four cars at every household and there's, uh, maybe adult children living there. And there's certainly more than one car per household making trips out of the neighborhood. And I wonder, i- i- is it the county or the state that comes up with that formula? And if so, when's the last time they, they updated it?
I can't answer, I mean, it's been fairly recently, but I can't answer the exact year that it was updated. Ryan or Selena, I don't know if you can answer that question.
Are you referring to the I T E manual?
Well, I think there's also, there's, I believe that I T, there's actually the I T and there's the trip gen, right? There's two different manuals, but I, and I don't know the last date that the trip um, gen manual was updated. But it's been fairly, I mean, it's a fairly recent, they do it fairly frequently.
Yeah, I think we're like on version eleven, I did like real, like just literally recently it was updated. They do that, this is a whole program, the I T E, it's a whole system. Transportation engineers are licensed, they have an entire program. Um, you can go online and look at these. Um, but yeah, I think version eleven just literally came out, I think it's version eleven.
I think the overriding concern everybody has is a, a traffic and transportation is a primary concern. Uh, e- even the, uh, the, the promise or the assertion that there aren't going to be that many trips made out of the urban village. I think I'm skeptical about that to begin with. I, I don't believe that everybody's going to live there and never leave there. And I, I think we, we tend to minimize the traffic, even thinking about, uh, emergency access to that area. Anytime you're down there on Kent and Kangley with, uh, the new hospital down there now, uh, I see ambulances having a hard time making it through there to the hospital, let alone a major fire truck or something. I don't have any, any recommendations about that, obviously, but I, I know that's a major concern and I'm glad we're talking about that, I guess.
And I think that the, the good thing about what's been negotiated to help with that concern is that for every project that comes in, we're having to account for every one of those trips. So for every new use that's being proposed, that those trips are having to be accounted for. So if, if the concern plays out and, and the trips are doing something else or they're larger, we're going to, we're going to know about it. And, and we're going to reach that cap that has been imposed sooner, if, if that's the concern. But I think people, we're all going to know, hopefully, we hope that it's the opposite, but we are going to know about it.
Thank you.
Any other, oh, Selena?
Thank you. I would just also add, just for the purpose of context, that the city of Covington has a model and for every project we run that development through that model. And that model produces a map that shows us and designates where impacts are starting to grow, right? So we've adopted a level service D within the city of Covington, okay? So we have, and there's numbers and all the I T E, there's, there's specialized people that do this work, right? And, and we hire those people to do that work for us. And so we, we as a city, look at those intersections, at those, those links with every development that comes in. And as we start to see those numbers, those start to trigger the impacts and the mitigations that are necessary for that development. So just from the purpose of context, yes, so we're looking at Lake Point as a development and they've got trips distributed in their fashion within that area. But the city is also in a position where we look kind of at the larger picture. And as each one of those trips come in, that, we look at that at the bigger picture. And so we do reserve the right, as Megan had said, to come in and kind of say, wait, are our assumptions correct? Did we forecast this correctly, right? Like how good was our crystal ball? And then we can then have those conversations with the developer. It also sets the city up to be able to go out for additional funding to do better in other roads, right? So as two seventy-second builds out, as one ninety-first gets connected, as highway eighteen, you know, if we get that big dollars for highway eighteen, all of that contributes to the ability for us to move. So I just want to say for this group that while we're looking at it kind of in the macro or the micro level on Lake Point, the city is looking at that larger picture.
Commissioner Growth?
Just, and, yeah. That larger picture is the concurrency reservation certificate that appears to be issued for X number of trips already. X number of trips already. So how does that coincide with what we were just told?
Can you explain that more? Where, where are you seeing a disconnect?
You're, well, you're saying that for every, every time that you, there's something that happens, there's an ability to assess that in this, in this larger model. But that larger model has already been run and according to this agreement, sets that C R C at two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight trips. So that isn't an incremental lessons learned, that is the maximum number that's already been reserved in that model for this development. So I guess how do those, how do those two statements align that we've already reserved the capacity of those trips? But we're still going to be reviewing those trips, not until we get to eighty-five trips below that number, is there additional review?
I guess I'm, I, I guess I need a little bit more explanation because yes, you're correct, there is a ceiling that, that's accounted for in Lake Point, right? And with each implementing project that comes in, they're going to dip into that bucket of trips, okay? And in the city's larger model, we can account for that. We can say, here's a Lake Point bucket. This is very simplified. It is a lot more complicated, folks, but just a very simplified. The city has, has only so many trips, right? That we can account for based on our land use designations throughout the city, right? It's, it's a lot more granular and broken down, but I'm just going to simplify it. And, and we're going to be talking, actually be talking about this later this year, folks, so I have more to come on this. But the city can reserve, to your point, reserve out those impacts that Lake Point has created. And they've mitigated for those impacts ideally forecasted based on our snapshot, right? For those impacts of those trips. So other developments are also going to be contributing to their mitig, to mitigation within the city as they come in. And at some point, who knows when, I mean, every city is up against this, right? Concurrent is a thing. We're not going to be able to always be building ourselves out of that, right? But that's a longer conversation. With Lake Point specifically, we've taken we've taken that snapshot today based on their mix of development. And we've accounted for that in our longer range planning efforts. Now, with each project that comes in, we have that ability to kind of check ourselves, right? I can't say today that something isn't gonna break the model in the future, right? We've done the best we can with what we have and what we know based on land use today. I don't know if I'm answering your question, Commissioner Growth. But I think like, what I'm trying to get at is that the, the traffic is, traffic is one a thing. I, we completely hear that, we hear that all the time. There's a lot of concern with how people move about the city and the region, right? This is a regional issue. We are one piece of that larger puzzle. And so the city ha- is in a position to learn as we grow, right? Like, you know, over time, we can start to make different decisions about complete streets. Bus rapid transit, you know, how we start to create more multimodal outcomes, but we have to start somewhere. And, and that somewhere is our current model, understanding where those trips are going today and understanding how Lake Point plays a piece in that, and every development that comes in. I, I don't know if I answered that and it's
Well, I guess one of the things.
Kind of a, it's kind of a art and science traffic is.
It, it is. Well, if I can just say, one of the things that I think Mr. Cottle raised was the ability to ensure that Oak Point and the city you know, do this together. So what it possibly sounds like I'm hearing though is saying that, well, the city is going to continue reviewing. But I, I would have some concern that, you know, if Oak Point has a development agreement that gives them twenty-five hundred trips, like they should be able to rely on the fact that they have twenty-five hundred trips. They've mitigated for twenty-five hundred trips. So while the mix, if they do a, a residential home, that's okay, one P M peak hour trip. If they do a thirty-bed senior living, that's sorry, nine P M peak hour trips. So we don't know what the mix is, but I, I want to make sure there's not, the city's not going to have another bite at the apple to say like, oh, well, we could get more mitigation out of Oak Point because they've already got twenty-five hundred trips reserved. So the Covington Connector, like, they have to build that entirely before they can do any type of development. That's mitigating all twenty-five hundred trips. So once they hit that cap, there isn't another assessment to say there's more traffic needs. And I, I guess what I was hearing was that we're saying that, well, we're going to continue reassessing what the traffic impacts are going to be. I, I guess I, I hope that's been done.
We, I guess I would put it a little differently because I said that we're, we're reporting on each project to provide certain information on each project. With, this was a programmatic, you know, E I S that was done, that's based on a certain assumptions about, you know, eternal capture and absorption and where those trips are going and what a certain use produces, right? As the trip gen manual continues to be updated, um, as frankly, as we play out in real time, what internal capture really is. Based on it being a programmatic E I S, if our assumptions are way off, there is the ability to relook at that because of the nature of a programmatic E I S and what's covered under a programmatic E I S. So I think it's different than which I have also seen, not having to do the reporting along the way, right? Just saying, we have twenty-five hundred trips and hands off and you don't get to touch us for fifteen years. That's not this because of the nature of the evaluation that went in. There was a ton of valuation. We all think we know what's going to happen, but if it plays out differently, there are opportunities for review. And potentially, we don't think that's the case because we think the assumptions are still going to align. But if they don't, there is the opportunity to have further discussions about what those impacts that are happening on the ground that weren't anticipated because in, in that event, they're not, they haven't been mitigated.
Does that address your concern, Commissioner Growth?
If, if I can just one clarifying then, they haven't been mitigated, meaning that the internal capture rate assumption, not the trip itself.
Well, I think, I mean more in the broad sense of, of traffic impacts, right? If, if the assumptions are not from an internal capture or even from a, if, if the, you know, the trip gen manual comes out tomorrow and says, hey, look, we were way off on let's, we talked about senior housing, right? If senior housing really is more like one trip per unit. If, if the assumptions are kind of turned on their head that we relied on to produce the E I S and the S E I S, there's an opportunity to look at unmitigated impacts kind of throughout the project.
And I think from a relational standpoint, I'm going to look at the developers team. Um, we've been very transparent and copacetic about how we do that work. We have, they, they have their folks and we have our folks. And we, we do our own work and we come together and we work together to talk through that. So I think, um, you know, we've, we've, to, to address the relationship piece of it, that relationship is healthy. And I think as Megan just had said, those kind of countermeasures or those checks and balances, we built that into the system. So I think we're feeling pretty comfortable with those numbers and I, and I think all of us are waiting to just kind of just see real time, right? What, what really happens in the future and, and how well did we do? And I think we're all open to those conversations.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My questions have been answered. Thank you both.
Any other questions, uh, from the commissioners? Commissioner Columber?
Yeah, I, I'm supportive of what Lake Point is doing. I'm, I'm going to vote positive, positive for our recommendations, but I I think the reality is we can have a lot of metrics thrown at us from different perspectives. And those numbers don't really mean anything to the average person on the street because of every coffee shop and every uh, grocery line you stand in, the people are talking about the traffic problem and we've been, uh, I've lived here ten years and we've been playing catch-up for ten years and we're not catching up or for, or falling further behind. So whatever the metrics are we're using, they aren't, they aren't working or, or we're breaking down somewhere. I don't know where that is, but uh, the traffic is worse and worse and everybody's frustrated by it. And to say, well, we have adequate metrics in place for the next major development, isn't really much of a consolation to most people. Um, but uh, like I say, I'm, I'm in favor of what we're doing at Lake Point. I'm in favor of the way they're doing it. But I just think, uh, uh, whether it's in sports or business or uh, anything, everything anymore is metrics, metrics, metrics. And when I'm sitting at the stoplight waiting four times to turn left on the I can't Kangley, I don't care what the metrics are, the metrics are, I've been sitting there for five minutes waiting to turn. So I think that's, that's uh, that's our concern as citizens of Covington.
And I can say personally, I've, I've been here for over twenty years and it's been going, it's been going the whole time. And it is always the number one topic of concern uh, with citizens when, when I hear from them, so. Are there any other questions or any other points of discussion from the commissioners? Okay, it looks like everybody's concerns and questions have been addressed. Uh, so I guess we will move on to uh, uh, our potential uh, recommend, uh, motion here. And I'll read the motion. The recommended motion is the city has provided is move to recommend that the city council approve the proposed twenty-twenty-one major amendment to the Lake Point Development Agreement in substantial form as found in the Planning Commission Staff Memo. Finding that the amendments are in accordance with the Covington Comprehensive Plan, the Plan to Action Ordinance and C N C fourteen dot thirty dot zero six zero. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion to uh, make that recommendation?
I move we approve the recommendation.
Sir, a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to recommend that the city council approve the proposed twenty-twenty-one major amendment to the Lake Point Development Agreement in substantial form is found in this Planning Commission Staff Memo. Finding that the attachments are in accordance with the Covington Comprehensive Plan, the Planned Action Ordinance and C N C fourteen dot thirty dot zero six zero. We'll proceed to a vote. Uh, all in favor of this motion, please raise your hands and say aye. Any opposed? And with that, the motion is carried. All right. I believe that will take us to our next item of business for this evening. Soon as I get back to that page. Uh, our new business is the social media policy introduction. Uh, Ryan, are you going to do that?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, Selena is going to be providing.
Selena is going to do that. Okay, I, I believe I, I knew that. My apologies, Selena.
It's okay. Good evening, commissioners. Um, I am just going to quickly go over the memo in the packet. Um, this is in regards to the new social media policy that the council adopted at their November ninth meeting. Um, and so I've just attached that directly in here. I had asked previously, um, our city attorney and our communications, um, Carla and Mark, if they were going to kind of do a roadshow so that the commissions would understand the purpose of this policy and what the commissioners need to do in order to comply with this policy. Um, at this time, they have not formulated that roadshow, but Mark, our city attorney, did ask that I at least present this to you, let you know it exists. And then if there's any specific questions that you have for um, our attorney um, regarding this policy, that I collect those, bring those back and that'll help formulate um, any kind of future discussion. Um, if, if we want to bring Mark back to really talk about this. Um, so in short, the um, city council requested that the policy be established to formalize a consistent way for council members, commissioners and other city officials to use social media. And I just want to point out that in the policy itself, it does, um, city officials used, in quotes, um, includes uh, city council members, commissioners and officials appointed to advisory boards. So this policy does apply to the planning commission. And as a result of um, this policy, um, it basically talks about how you use your social media pages, right? So when, um, when we look at um, public or official business, um, if you want to use your social media page for that, that's not really something we want you doing. Um, but however, there is an option for you to set up a separate official City of Covington Planning Commissioner um, Facebook page or Instagram or TikTok or whatever social media platform you choose to use. Um, and then that would be through Carla, she would set those up. And on that platform, then you could fully discuss city business um, and participate in that conversation um, at as, as a city official level. Um, you also have your private pages that you all have. And those are intended to be for your personal, private use. They are not intended to, you know, kind of reshare or otherwise um, participate in any political discussions that way pertaining to the city of Covington business. Um, so like I said, you know, I don't know if you all had a chance to read through this document, I can give you a minute or two. But if there's any specific questions that you have, I'd love to collect those and then take that back to um our internal team so that they can understand what information you might want to know more about.
All righty. Do any commissioners have any questions regarding the policy? I'll give you some time, just in case. While they do that, I'd like to point out that I appreciate uh, the time that uh, Mr. Schwent and uh, uh, I don't remember her name, sorry. What was her name, Ryan?
Megan Nelson.
Maybe Megan Nelson, thank you. I appreciate the time that they dedicated to present to us this evening. I should have said that before we moved on. So everybody had enough time to review it? Are there any questions? Okay, looks like not.
In that case, um, would the commission still like Mark to come and talk about the policy? Or do you feel that it adequately, you adequately understand it, or would you like kind of a, a briefing or a process review with the attorney?
I think I saw Commissioner Growth nod his head that he would like a presentation. Is that correct, Commissioner Growth?
Yeah, whether it's from the attorney or as you mentioned, your communications person, I, I think it'd be beneficial just to say like, look, Yeah, whether it's from the attorney or as you mentioned, your communications person, I I think it'd be beneficial just to say like, look, this is what this means. Especially if they put a roadshow together. I don't know if there's. Specific violations that we've been doing. So I don't know that there's a. Impasse of doing this immediately. But I think it'd be helpful if they do their dog and pony show to come to the planning commission and say like, look, this is what this concern is addressing.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. I am not the subject matter expert on this. That's why I'm just collecting questions.
Well, you understand the I T E manual. That was, that was important. Alrighty, well, then I guess we will, uh, uh, move on then. Uh, there is no old business for discussion this evening. Which takes us to our attendance vote and Vice Chair Ingram did notify, uh, Darren and, uh, excuse me, Darren. Ryan and Selena and myself, uh, that he may not be available this evening, and indeed he was not. Um, so would somebody like to make a motion to excuse, uh, Vice Chair Ingram's absence this evening?
That motion.
Okay, a second.
Seconded.
Okay, uh, what's been moved and seconded to excuse, uh, Vice Chair Ingram's absence this evening, uh, all in favor, please say aye, raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Nope. All right, Commissioner Ingram's absence is now officially excused. Um, so let's see, this opens up our second, uh, citizen comment period. Ryan, do we have any citizens left on the call?
Oh, we do, Mr. Chair, and.
We do.
Have one person or two, two people that have raised their hands, so.
Alrighty, well, let me reread, uh, the rules here.
Yep. Go ahead.
So, uh, the citizen comment period is to provide the opportunity for members of the audience to address the commission on items either not on the agenda or not listed as a public hearing. Uh, I will open this portion of the meeting and ask for a show of hands for those persons wishing to address the commission. When recognized, please give your name, city of residence and the state, and please state the matter of your interest. If your interest is an agenda item, I may suggest that your comments wait until that time. Actually won't happen now. Uh, citizen comments are directed to the planning commission, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate. Citizen comments will be limited to four minutes. Uh, if you require more than the allotted time, your item will be placed on the next agenda. Uh, as a reminder, if you're dialing in for this meeting, you must press star nine to raise your hand. And with that. Uh, Ryan, who is up first?
Actually, Robert Schwint is up first. He raised his hand before Mr. Cottle did.
Mr. Schwint.
I just want to take this opportunity to also thank the commission for their continued support. You know, we've been to you several times with a lot of different things over the past few years and. It's always great. We can open, have an open dialogue. Spill our guts and get where we need to go for the benefit of the community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, did you say, uh? Mr. Cottle?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
There you go.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Good evening again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, first off, I want to say thank you for, um, entertaining my concerns. I thought you did a very good job of addressing those. I feel that, um, the. Lake Point Agreement is one that's going to be very instrumental and important to the City of Covington. So that is a good thing. I also want to add one other thing. I think that the fire station thing is still an issue of outstanding concern. I'm seeing that. The one fire station that's on two fifty six, station, fire station seventy eight. Is like a minute and a half away from what would be the one B type of construction. And of that the retail section, and so it would be necessary to do that. Rather than going to one ninety first, one ninety first is coming down Timber Lane. It's through a residential area and be very, I think, very. Disruptive and slow to get the fire trucks in there. Also, Puget Sound's Fire Station number seventy five is in Covington. Uh, and it would go down highway eighteen and get to the, the incident area quicker than going through residential areas. So that. To me, it sounds like one ninety first doesn't have anything to do with the fire stations. So, um, based on all that, I think that, uh, once that is accommodated and we are protecting. Everything there, I think that's good. The other concern I still have about the police is I'm still concerned about the fact that. Retail businesses still need to have security, like when we had a one power outage, the jewelry store in Covington got burglarized completely during that power outage. And, um, and I see the smash and grab crimes that are occurring on the West Coast. And I don't want to see that happen to any of our businesses in Covington. So police presence is important. Police protection is important. And then the fire services, first responder services is so important for our area as well. And with that, I'd say, uh, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cottle. Um, Ryan, I see that there's a question. Uh, in the Q and A section. Uh, did you want to take a moment to address that? It's regarding information, uh, on those formulas. Potentially requiring lane additions, et cetera.
So I believe that that question, um. Was not addressed or not asked formally during the public hearing. And I think it would be related to something that has to do with the previous agenda item.
Okay.
But all that information is within the planning commission packets. Uh, where is the required lane additions to nearby highway traveled roads that will be impacted by this, that, okay? Um, we have some information on the website that we can, uh. Kind of direct people to, I'll work with Selena on that. Like we said, we're going to be talking traffic here in the near future. So.
Yeah.
Um, let me take a look.
Okay, great. Thank you. I didn't, I didn't want to leave that behind, but I didn't see it in time for the discussion section. Alrighty. Uh, well, that takes us to comments and communications of staff and commissioners. So, uh, this evening we will.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, I'd recommend that, uh, you ask if there's anybody else in the audience wishing to.
Ah, yes, thank you. I did not close that out properly.
There are, there are.
There are four individuals. Oh, we have more people. Oh, good. Okay. Uh, well, please, uh. Uh, add the first person.
No one has raised their hand, so.
Oh, no one has raised their hands. Oh, I thought you meant four people had raised their hands. That was pretty exciting. Uh. Okay, so if no one has raised their hands, then we will go ahead and then close the public comment period. I'm sorry for not doing that. Um, and we will move to comments and communications of staff and commissioners, and we will start with Ms. Lyons.
I have nothing for you this evening, um, other than just, I hope you have a great holiday season.
Thank you very much. Mr. Herman.
I'm trying to unmute myself. Let me, uh, let me look at my map here real quick. I believe, I believe in the, uh, in the conversations that we had this evening regarding, uh, fire. Believe Ms. Lyons referred to a fire station off of southeast two fifty six. It's near one hundred eightieth intersection right there. Uh, that would be the most direct closest to the Lake Point. Uh, urban village, uh, for fire access. So that's just. Right across the overpass and right down to the first stoplight there on two fifty six. So. That is probably the closest one. Uh, do want to thank all of you. My wife thanks all of you for making a decision tonight, so we don't have to have a planning commission meeting later this month. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, also, uh, the first meeting in January is not going to happen either. So we'll be meeting during the second meeting in January. I'll be gone the first meeting, so if, uh, if you really, really want to meet, I mean. By all means, but I'll be gone. So, uh, with that, I have no further items to bring up. I just want to say thank you for the. The comments we received this evening from the audience, uh, from the applicant. Um, and from you commissioners, uh, you put a lot of work into this all throughout this entire process and. Uh, you've done a very good job and you've been very thorough in your questions and your review. So I thank you for your time on this.
Thank you very much. And and I think it's safe to speak for at least most of us, if not all of us, that we probably are happy to not have the first meeting in January. So. Uh, let's see, Ms. Hernandez, do you have anything this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Alrighty. Um, and Commissioner Thorne, do you have anything this evening?
I don't.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Columber?
Thank you for your leadership, uh, Chairman Williams and.
Thank you.
Ryan and Selena for your, for your input, for your guidance and, uh, happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Foster?
Everybody have a, uh, good holiday and we'll see you next year.
Sounds good. Commissioner Gilbert Smith?
Just happy holidays, everyone. Stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, Commissioner Growth.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair. Just like Joe did, I want to just thank you for running a good meeting. I.
Well, thank you.
I I I've seen a lot of people be a chair and a lot of boards and I think you do a great job.
Oh, appreciate.
Appreciate that. It makes it, makes it fun. Um, thanks for city staff, Brian, Selena, Daphne, for just, you know, being here, supporting and providing the information. And I got to say, uh, I haven't been on this commission very long, but I've. Been around a lot of planning commissions. And this was the, going into tonight, I saw the agenda. I thought this could be a quick meeting, but this might have been the first time. I really saw something and and, you know, didn't know what, uh, what way to go on a recommendation. But I had the opportunity, uh, to. Hear from, you know, Mr. Robert Schwint there and get some information from staff. And to me, that that's a, that's a great process. A great way to know that, you know, questions are being answered. You get responses. Uh, this is, in my opinion, uh, the going to result in a great project. I live next to it. Uh, two hundred and fourth, I've got a fence that goes right on to two hundred and fourth. I'm going to be able to walk to Lake Point when it happens. So obviously, I'm maybe vested in. It being great, but this process. Uh, I'm coming in late to it. I know a lot has happened for Lake Point over the years. I've tried to. Read up and catch myself up on it, but I wasn't actually involved. So. Being there, seeing this, this past two weeks since our last meeting, uh, it's really been fun. I I I actually do enjoy that. I appreciated the comments that I got, uh, to hear and the input from the public. Uh, this renewed my faith in how the planning commission, the city just operates. So. From the leadership to the chair, to the guidance of staff, to the professionalism of the applicant, to the questions of the planning commission. Uh, just really proud tonight and wanted to share that.
Thank you. Uh, well, I've got to say that I just could not be more pleased. Uh, you know, our commission, we've got so many great people. You know, all of our commissioners are great. We've got representatives from all across the board that that really do spend the time to do that work. And to ask the questions and, uh, it's just, it's really a pleasure and a joy to to be able to work with you all on this stuff. And likewise for Ryan and Selena, it's a pleasure and a joy to work with you, uh, and the City of Covington. And, uh, appreciate all the work and and time. And I know it's been a pretty, pretty interesting year for y'all. So that's, uh, that's great. Um, also thankful for, uh, our present, uh, presenters this evening from, uh, Oak Point. And, uh, for the help of Daphne. And I wish you all a great holiday season and look forward to continuing our work and seeing you all again next year. And, uh, I guess with that, I will adjourn the meeting. And it is seven fifty five P M. I got it, Ryan. So it's great to see you all and have a great holiday.
Good night.
Good night.